I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Yes.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Yes.
Alderman Ovian.
Yes.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dinnelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Wygott.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen aldermen are present, roll call, are present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor. Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation W. Belvo.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Yeah.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole. Director of Wastewater Royce Carlisle.
Yeah.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Assistant Chief Spargers here for Chief Clay and John Hartman, Assistant Director of Public Works, is here for Jason Poole. I think that's everybody, wasn't it? Tell me who we have.
Chief Poore.
Oh, Chief Poore's gonna be here. I think he's just out on a run, because I talked to him just a little while ago. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say before we have, well, let's go ahead and have the pledge of allegiance. If you're able, please stand. Tom Poor's here. Okay, before we get started, want to go over a couple things, because we have quite a few, maybe some new people here tonight. If we would have to ever leave the building because of smoke or fire, one of those situations, we would ask that you, certainly our police officers and firemen who are present, will point you to either one of the doors, but we would ask that you leave carefully, cross the street cautiously, and hopefully go and gather in front of the courthouse sign up front, so that we can kind of make sure that people you came with all got out okay. If we had severe weather, that we had to go to the storm shelter, once again, the police officers will guide you across the city lobby, across the lobby here, and to a door right across from the clerk's office that goes downstairs to the storm shelter, to the area that's safe. This evening, in just a minute, when I call on people, when they raise their hand for public participation, I will recognize you one at a time, come to the microphone, give your name, try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, and try to keep it to something that's on the agenda if possible, if not, at least city business. We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll go to public participation, and I'll ask that whoever would like to speak this evening start by raising your hand. Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, my name is John Spellbring. I'm the co-owner of Turn Treasures Gallery, and we're here on a zoning issue, dealing with the encroachment of public seating from the wine tap in front of our store. It's been going on for quite a while. We've gone back and forth with the former owner, Will, and when we saw that the zoning board was going to create a special, I guess, ordinance for outdoor seating and alcohol, we felt we should step forward. It has not been very good for our business. The combination of the tables and umbrellas tend to block the view of our window. There's also a significant amount of, I should say, mess at the end of a given evening. We have, during the previous meeting, the zoning meeting, agreed to, you know, we do want to work with the new owners, but we really would like to have the tables removed from our area. There's also, the last issue I'd like to mention is smoke. A lot of people like the tables out there, because they can smoke there. Unfortunately, that smoke kind of drifts directly into our store if we have our doors open. I do have some pictures, I don't know if they're...
Okay, if you want to leave them with the clerk here, or pass them up, Andy, if you would.
Okay.
Here we go. He'll take them right here. What I would suggest, I saw that on the variance, that there was a concern about the seating. I think the best thing we can do is probably get the new proposed ownership, and yourself, and maybe myself, and we'll sit down and we'll work this out. I think there's some ways. We had tried, suggested some things before, and it's true that maybe some of the management, as will, was not there as much, maybe didn't follow with some of the things we had asked before. I think we can work this out, so we'll, we will listen and sit down with you, and we'll try to make this come to terms.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I don't think that's undoable at all. Yes, sir.
John Steinloggy is my name, and I live in Belvo, Illinois. I was in business here for thirty-six years, and I love Belvo. I think it's a great town. It's just misguided sometimes. And one of the things that's misguided about is raising these fees on certain things. Now, the Special Finance Committee, I have the names of the members here, Consilla, Pusa, Tyler, Ovian, Schaefer, Gah, Wyngott, and Barfield. I'd like to know how many of you have experienced running a business employing ten or more people? Raise your hand.
No, this is not a question and answer, John. I'm not going to, I'm not, this is, this is your chance for two to three minutes to make public comment.
Okay.
This is not quiz each other.
You do not realize expenses involved in this industry, especially, I know one restaurant had to replace a rooftop furnace a month ago, it cost them sixty-two hundred dollars, and they have six more like it. Don't talk about O'Fallon does, they're already taking our car dealers and many of our residences, but don't let them take our residences and bars. Anyway, I go on to say about the video gaming and everything like that, but it seems for every new one, you lose three, two or three. Rations, IHOP, and shenanigans. Yes, revenues are high on the gaming machines, but so are expenses. You don't realize the cost of insurance, music, license fees, support organizations, bands, DJs, etc., sir. When you go to sell your business, you'll be in for a few surprises. One, is if you have a gas-fired equipment, which most good ones do, and you have to install a special valve that shuts off the gas off every night, when you turn the hood on in the morning and lets the gas go. But, the quality valve, the cost is twenty-four hundred dollars. That means every morning, you have to light, to pilot license all equipment, unless you have pilot lights on. This means you have to bring an employee incapable of doing this an hour early. So twelve dollars an hour, times seven days, is eighty-four dollars, times fifty-two weeks, is four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year. If you lose power for just a minute during a thunderstorm, you have to relight all the pilot lights again. They close, you know, people don't like that. They go to county, now, somebody's gonna say it's the state's fault, and this fault, and everybody's fault. But that's oxen scheis. If anybody doesn't know oxen scheis, look it up in your German dictionary. When you talk about revenue, your city is down, it's because of decrease in population, or you not think our revenues are down also? All these events that take place on downtown, there's nineteen of them, they don't help the other end of town. Now, if you're gonna bump up the prices on your different fees, I don't think it should be included past Eighth or Ninth Street, because they don't have the things that help the downtown. Answer is simple. All businesses in Belvo should have a license. Just walk in and pay your fee, and so be it. Make it a reasonable fee, a hundred bucks a year. Just think, if every business in Belvo paid a hundred dollars, how much revenue this would raise? It would raise more than your one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars you're short, and it's not gonna hurt anybody. The same thing if you raise the fees for inspections on apartments, et cetera, those fees, the landlord will just add that into the rent, so they're not getting hurt. But the people with the taverns and the bars, that's a totally different thing. They can't add anything into anything. Anyway, and all the fish fries during Lent takes away business, and no sales taxes coming in. That's one thing. All my life, I've always thought, I don't know why...
Okay, John, can you wrap it up? Because I think there's a lot of people want to talk...
I don't know why they have to exempt fish fries from sales tax. That's stupid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in the back of the room? Yes, sir. Didn't see you back there. You're hiding?
No.
Oh.
Stuart Lanter, Belvo. City hall meetings are safer than most school kids, yes, city hall meetings are safer than most schools. Metal detectors and three or four heavily armed police take care of the people here. Mayor was right, if the News Democrat quoted him correctly. People leaving town due to high taxes and businesses are also either closing or leaving, so let's vote in, again, the clowns that got us in this mess in the first place. Now, this might rub some people the wrong way, but it's true. Many Democrats are racist. Lyndon Johnson said after passing the Civil Rights Bill, we're gonna have them niggers voting for us for the next, for the next, for the two-hundred, two-hundred years.
Mr. Lanter, please take your seat. We have talked about this numerous times. There's sometimes children here, we're not gonna tolerate your outbursts like you have done many times. Gentlemen, please ask him to leave.
You never, ever done, you never listened to rap music, I take it.
No. No, this is repeated, and we have had this conversation. Shame on you for not listening. We let you talk fairly, but you're not gonna start dropping the words like that. Anybody else this evening would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, Keith Shell from the Edge. You know, I don't envy your jobs. I mean, I appreciate your service to the city. We're in a tough time, we all know that. We see what's happening in the state, we see what's happening in the city. People are leaving because of taxes, and that's a fact. And for us to put our heads in the sand about that is a mistake, I believe. Coming to a realization that we have some of the highest taxes in the country here is a fact. This isn't made up. Living in St. Clair County, it's difficult because of that. I mean, they use us as a perfect example as a small business. When we bought our business in nineteen ninety-eight, we were paying five thousand dollars a year in property taxes. At the end of our expansion, we're gonna be paying over a hundred. We paid, this last year, we paid over two-hundred thousand dollars in taxes to St. Clair County and the city of Belvo. It's a lot more money than we made. Now, you think about that. We paid, we paid over two-hundred thousand dollars to this, this isn't, this isn't state taxes, this is to St. Clair County and to the city of Belvo. That's a heck of a lot of green that could have gone to a lot of good, to a lot of needed employees in our business, could have gone to us, which we could have used. We love the area, but I do believe that there's gotta be a compromise, that there's gotta be a position at the table for businesses and the taxpayer. You've got a difficult job, but there are certainly alternatives. I've brainstormed with a lot of people on ways to reduce costs of city government. They're out there. Maybe we need to do a public-private partnership and collaborate and stick our heads together. We're smart people. We're innovative people. Let's come together. We have a, we act like we have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. We have one of the highest per capita city budgets of a city our size in the country. That's, that's a fact. It's not, this isn't made up, okay? We need to work together. If we could all of a sudden, imagine this, imagine, if all of a sudden, in St. Clair County, we could come together, all the cities, the townships, the county, and collaborate on ways to cut costs. It could be done. It takes cooperation, it takes hard work, but if we make the taxpayer, the business owners, some of our top priorities, then maybe we can reverse the trend. Maybe we can be the beacon on the hill in Illinois. Maybe St. Clair County could be the one that says, hey, you know what? The buck is stopping here. We're gonna actually start lowering property taxes and attracting people back in. Taking twelve hundred dollars or more, that's what it's gonna be to us, out of our, is it gonna kill us? No. Does it, does it make us resentful? It does. It's hard not to be resentful, when we're paying as much taxes as we are, when we have employees that have been working with us for a long time, and we're giving them raises as we can. But they deserve more. They work hard. It can't, and if I came to any of you as city employees, anybody that works for the city, and I said, hey, you know what? I'm gonna give you a twelve hundred dollar pay cut this year, because the city's having a tough time. You have six hundred employees, okay? You give a twelve hundred dollar pay cut. I'm not asking, I'm not suggesting that. But that's what you're doing to us. Again, I appreciate your consideration on this matter. There is better ways. I know there's better ways, and if you guys were willing to listen to them, I'm sure we could together, collaboratively, come up with some better solutions than having to raise taxes. Let's be the leader. Let's make Belvo something that, I love Belvo. Let's make it so we can all work together. It doesn't have to be an adversary relationship between government and the taxpayer, or businesses and the government. We need each other. We're all in it together. Let's, let's make it strong again.
Thank you. Anybody next?
My name's Rick Tucker, I'm with Mojacks Tavern. We're a small corner tavern with a small but loyal customer base. Our customers are all blue collar, working-class people. Many, many of those are retired from local trades. They live in the general vicinity of our establishment. Our focus is to provide our customers with the best possible service for the best price that we can. Ninety percent of our folks are all regulars, many of them come there every day. Without those people, we surely would not be in business. That being said, knowing our customers the way we do, increasing our prices to offset fee increases would not be an easy thing for us to do. Our customers wouldn't accept that very well. My wife and I are longtime, lifelong residents of Belvo, and we have a vested interest in doing what we can to maintain a good relationship with the city and our neighbors as well. We've purchased several properties surrounding the tavern. All of them were derelict, eyesores. They were all demolished simply to help clean up the surrounding, the area surrounding the business. They really don't add any profitability to the business itself. The most recent purchase, we bought a duplex next door to the tavern, and we tore it down. The fire department was able to use it for some training for a while before we demolished it. And that place, that area, now, we are keeping as green space, just to, just to help with the neighborhood a little bit. We don't have any plans to put anything on the property or increase parking, it's just, just to improve the neighborhood. In addition to the investment that we've made in the neighborhood, we've also worked real hard to keep our building up to date. The building is an old, late eighteen hundreds, two-story brick building, takes a lot of work to keep it up. Up until the time that the city of Belvo allowed video gaming, we struggled to make a profit. And that, in part, is due to our keep-it-simple-and-sell-it-cheap method of operation, but we accept that and still prefer to do business that way. Video gaming has provided a means for us to make much-needed repairs to our building and to replace old and inefficient furniture and equipment. We still have plenty of work that needs to be done, but with the limited funds, we can only do, do things little at a time as we, as we raise funds to do it. And everything that we've done is necessary. We've done nothing over the top or extravagant by any means. I think most folks that are in this industry will tell you that business isn't what it used to be, and the same certainly applies to us. Decreasing revenue and increasing cost of doing business makes it tough, especially on the small operations like us. I read in the News Democrat that one of the explanations for the number of, for the fee increases was the loss of income tax because of the large number of people that are leaving Illinois. To me, it just doesn't sound fair to the people that choose to stay in Illinois and put everything they have into their businesses just to be faced with higher fees to make up for the other folks that didn't stay. If this burden has to fall on the people, I feel it should fall on all of the people and spread it out amongst every business and every taxpaying citizen. It shouldn't be the sole responsibility of our industry to make up for these shortfalls. I don't like tax increases any more than anyone else, but at least if I know my neighbor is paying his fair share, it makes it a little easier to take. We had heard the suggestion that the terminal operators that provide the video machines may help pay the increased fees, and that the, and that the proposed five hundred dollar fee, proposed to the terminal operators, would not affect the increases to our business. We did research that, and according to our vendor, per Illinois Gaming Board rules, our business would have to split the proposed five hundred dollar fee with the vendor. Also, per Illinois Gaming Board rules, the vendor can only contribute fifty percent towards any fees imposed. We understand that the city has to be bringing in revenue in order to provide quality services to its residents, but we're just asking that the burden be shared by everyone, rather than just a select few. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'll be brief, very brief.
Your name, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Steve Sullivan. My wife Jackie and I own and operate Sullivan's Tavern, nine oh seven North Illinois. It's not a fancy bar, it's not an Applebee's, it's definitely not a Loews or a German gas house, Hoffra House. We're just a simple little neighborhood bar like the gentleman that was just up here, trying to make ends meet, and we worked hard. We've worked hard, are keeping that business open for fifteen years in the city of Belvo. We're very proud of it, but at the same time, if you ask any of these small tavern owners in this town that used to have eighty-some bars, down to a handful right now, they're operating in the red, on the beverage side, and the only thing that keeps their doors open are the gaming fees, or the, are the gaming results. Very simply, we're just, we're just here to speak against these fee increases, obviously. We'd like to see those, the continuous, the endless increases to our taxes and our fees, we're to cease, and just let us go on with making a living and try and make a job, for some good...
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir. You can go first, then.
My name's AP Moore, and I own AP Gaming and Wizard Amusement. I've been in business since nineteen seventy-nine, and I've paid a lot of fees to the city of Belvo for pool tables, jukeboxes. I've outlasted Ace Heart, Fisher, all of them. And the problem here is that going through these taverns and stuff, you have seen them deteriorate over the years and stuff severely. Now that the gaming has become available for them, people are starting to put the money back into them. I'm sure that you drive through the city, you can see the facades on these buildings and stuff being changed, things are being cleaned up, and it's all due to the video gaming. And if you just keep increasing these fees, because, city of, everybody talks about the city of O'Fallon, they have no bar base like what you have. This is an entertainment town. Look at the people that you draw whenever you shut down up at the city square and stuff, and have the bands and stuff like that, Christmas time. Does any other city have that? No. Not even close. This city is totally different than anybody that surrounds you, and it should stay that way. You've been around here longer than anybody. Your wife runs a business here, you know? I mean, it is the place to be. And I mean, I hate to see these fees take it down. It is going to.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next gentleman behind him has his hand up.
Barry Gregory. My wife Patty Gregory and myself own Crehans Irish Pub and Banquet Center. Purchased the business back in ninety-eight. I chose to come here to Belvo. I'm not a lifelong resident. I chose to be in Belvo. I was gonna talk about the facts and figures that I put together over the past few days about the video gaming. For instance, video gaming in the city of Belvo has taken in nine-hundred fifty-four-thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars in just revenue. Last year alone, it took in three-hundred-seven-thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars in revenue. So that's all revenue fees. That doesn't include fees in addition to that. So we probably added a million dollars to the city budget already. The revenues have steadily increased in the city of Belvo. Last year, they were up twelve point two percent. The terminal, but yet, you look at the city of Belvo, the net terminal income is six-thousand six-hundred-and-two dollars below the state average. We were, I was gonna talk about the number of jobs. I can't find the exact numbers for the city of Belvo, but I can give you the exact total for State Representative Hoffman's district, which happens to be the city of Belvo. We supply in the hospitality industry two-thousand four-hundred jobs. Taxes paid in twenty seventeen was four-point-five-one billion dollars by our industry, and we can show that. But yet, yesterday, watching the news, when Your Honor spoke, said the fees are a done deal. So what's the purpose of having these open meetings? It seems senseless to talk about rational numbers, but yet, when you look at some of them, the video operation that's closest to me, the video gaming location, just outside the city limits, they're making five times the revenue off their machines that I am, and they're paying twenty-five dollars per machine. Five times what we take in. Grandpa Growlers, I don't believe they're represented here tonight, but let's talk about some rational numbers. They took in seven thousand dollars on video gaming last year. Why would their operator wanna spend eighteen to twenty-two thousand dollars for a terminal, add it to their location, pay an additional five hundred dollars to the city of Belvo, and then three hundred dollars for a machine in addition to that, when they can simply move it down the road to like Dutch Hollow Barn, T.R.'s, the American Legion, Cat and the Fiddle, any number of locations, or Casino Cafe, for twenty-five dollars in competing instances? The city of Caseyville, you can talk about O'Fallon at a thousand dollars, their mayor didn't want video gaming, so he made it a punitive damage, one thousand dollars. You look at the city of Caseyville, twenty-five dollars per unit. How are we supposed to grow revenues if, if you keep taking money away? In order to increase the video gaming, you have to use things like match play, like player incentive packages, advertising. If we can't reinvest our profits into our businesses and in growing our income with the business, what are we supposed to do? How are we supposed to increase revenue for you, the city? We talk about the increased fees of a thousand dollars for the video gaming, and this is just our location. Liquor license, an additional one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, plus a five-hundred-dollar terminal operator fee, which we have to pay half of. So that's a fourteen-hundred-dollar increase out of my pocket just next month. I don't get the budget or bill to that. Next month is when our liquor licenses come due, that's when I'd have to pay it. We talk about increased fees. How is that fair? You increase our fees fourteen hundred dollars, but occupancy inspections getting increased five dollars? A crime-free housing unit getting increased five dollars? A raffle license, five dollars? Heck, you can't even pay an employee to, to make that for five dollars. If you wanna raise our fees, I understand part of it, but what are we getting in return? You look at the city of Waterloo, for instance. They have a grant program. They set aside a portion of their video gaming revenues, and then, when you reinvest in your business and change the facade, you get a grant from them. Take, for instance, Randy's Double R Bar, just across from the courthouse. He spent thirty thousand dollars, the city gave him another ten thousand, he had a forty- He had a $40,000 facelift on his establishment. And that's not the only location. JV's did the same thing. There was a flower shop right in town, same thing, and a jewelry store. There's more businesses taking advantage of it. Couple of those weren't even in favor of video gaming, but yet they're rebeing the benefits of it. So let's simply sit down and figure this out. The last time we faced this issue, Alderman Silsby said, and I quote, "Let's sit down and talk about this. We'll form a committee and get together and figure out something." Our response was, "Tomorrow, we'll be available. You name the time, you name the place, and we're ready to meet and talk. Just please give us that opportunity. Thank you."
Anyone else?
Michael Hagberg. One thing that won't affect the businesses that are currently here is that they're going to pay an entire year's fees for this. But any new businesses coming in, if they come in in March or April or mid-April, they're going to have to pay an entire year's worth of fees, which are only good for till the end of April. And then they've got to pay another year's fee. There was no talk about prorating these fees for new businesses that are coming in or new ownerships that are coming in
That's not true.
to make it so that it's not unfair to them.
We prorate them. You're wrong there.
Is there anything in the ordinance that says that they're prorated?
It's done. It's done.
All right, thank you.
We don't make anybody pay a whole year for two months or three months.
Could we reflect that in the ordinance?
Well, then maybe that's a change you caught for us, you know, but we don't do that. That's not how we operate. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Back of the room.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Hampton. I own Dutch Hollow Barn. And I work, I'm with the Illinois Beverage Association. What I think you don't realize also is that the sales tax, these people pay 60% to 80% of liquor sales taxes. For every case, you get $5. But snooks only give, has to sell three cases to their one case. You don't, and same thing with the hard liquor. These people are supplying you with your liquor sales taxes. So I'll take that in consideration and thank you.
Thank you, sir. One more. That's kind of scary.
My name is Scott. I live in Belleville. I love Belleville also. Thank you for everybody for loving Belleville. I own Big Daddy 618. And all the bar owners, thank you for pulling together. Barry, your research is always impressive. A lot of passion on this, but I want to speak for Big Daddies and Big Daddies only. We are lucky to be in business, very much so. We've lost a lot of our industry, obviously, with pitchers, dandyans, shenanigans, fishers, a lot of local institutions, so to speak. We are a dying business. It is tough. Every business is out there dying. The only reason that I still remain open and it hurts my feelings and it bruises my ego, the only reason we're still open is because of gaming revenues. I did not realize this meeting was going to be so concentrated on the gaming, but I guess I do understand it because it is the one bringing in the most dollars. Liquor and food sales, the margins are small, cost of goods high, labor rate has changed. All the things that the city has the same problem with in running the city business, we the small business owner, we all have that problem also. In 13 years that I've been in business, Big Daddies, that is, has been in business, I have never seen a liquor license increase, never. So I do appreciate that. I don't know if everybody knows that, but never have I seen a liquor license increase. I know it came up several years ago, but in 13 years, I've never experienced that increase and so I feel lucky. I know there's always going to be some inflation costs are going to go up. So I've never seen a liquor license increase, so I am thankful for that. On the gaming, I don't know if anything's been set in stone. Going from $100 a terminal, just so you guys know, Big Daddies has five terminals. Most places have five terminals. $100 a terminal now, it's going to go to 300. So the math is about 1,400 bucks a month, which is what our, a year, which is what Barry Gregory was talking about. There has to be a compromise somewhere. Maybe instead of going from 100 a machine to 300, maybe it can go from 100 to 200, but maybe just some sort of compromise, a gradual increase might be a little bit more easier to take for everybody. But I understand the situation and I really wasn't expecting this kind of passion, but it owes a lot of dollars at stake, employees. But I understand the situation and if maybe it could just go up a little bit versus, it seems drastic to everybody, even though I know O'Fallon is 1,000 versus us being 100. So we are winning there, but different city, different situation. The guy had, AP Gaming had a great point. We, we're a little bit, I don't know. We're just a little bit better placed than some of these other that are charging way more. I appreciate that you're not doing that to us, so that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Seeing no other hands, I'm going to close public participation. And we're going to move on to the regular portion of the meeting. And at this time, I have three young ladies, I think if they're still here. Are they still here? They still in the back? If you want to come forward and recognize the character word of the month. If I'd have been on my game, I'd have brought you forward first and let you go home and study. So if you'd please introduce your name and your school you're from and then whoever's going to be the spokesperson.
I'm Maddie Young from Belleville East.
I'm Taylor Delfa, Belleville East.
My name's Kalen Schwabo and I'm also from Belleville East.
Okay.
And this month's word is perseverance, which is staying with the task and not giving up.
Okay. They're from the Basic Initiative, ladies and gentlemen, and each of the three high schools are a part of that and they do a lot of good things for the community. Ladies, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the regular portion of the meeting. Item eight on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Is there an objection if we would approve all three sets of minutes together? I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from February 20th, the executive session minutes from February 20th, 2018, and also included in that motion to approve the special city council meeting minutes from February 26th, 2018. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Wiggington. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of having those three sets of minutes approved, received, and filed, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We go to the claims, payroll, and disbursement. I'd ask for a motion to pay the claims, $1,107,051 and 1 cent, and the payroll of $830,448 and 68 cents. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Ovian. Any discussion on the claims or payroll? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele. Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, I'm asking for a motion to accept the bid from Schaefer Escavating in the amount of $14,800 for the demolition of 600 Wabash Avenue. Alderman Elmore, you'd like to make that second by Alderman Wygott. Any discussion on this? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Master Sear, Alderman Dillman.
On behalf of Master Sear Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised EPA administrative order on spending regarding the Clean Water Act, pretreatment program violations with the city of Belleville.
Have a motion by Alderman Dillman. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel. Any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to finance. Alderman Consilla, I'm not sure how you folks want to, what's your preference? Do you want to go through these one at a time or are you wanting to do them as a group or what is, what's the flavor? Okay, Alderman Consilla.
I make a motion to approve the video gaming machine stickers change from $100 per machine to $300 per machine.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pusa. So we now have a motion on the floor. I think, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of good comments, a lot of good things said. Some things I'm, 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 don't know what your questions are, but there's some things that some of you know need some clarity. Alderman Consilla?
Some people mentioned that we should, we should have a compromise, but I'd actually like to say that these figures are compromises because we have talked about different amounts and these are not the high amounts that we're talking about.
No, and that was one thing that.
Put it back into reality and these are actually compromised comparative originally what was talked about. I'd also like to mention that this, if we haven't raised these fees in 13 years, for example, well, this, not this one, but others. It's cost the city more to service the industry than it did 13 years ago. And since then, that's been paid for by the average citizen. And these are user fees. And I'd like to mention that we're not raising everybody's rates because these are people who actually get a service using this. These are not fees that are just sent out to everybody. I think that nobody likes to pay more, but this is better than raising everybody's taxes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bitner.
Well, I'd just like to say, I totally agree with everything these gentlemen were saying. This is, we're doing the same thing tonight. We've agreed to these fee increases that the state of Illinois is doing and we're going to chase people out of here. We're going to shut down a lot of these businesses. These guys count on the gaming revenue to stay in business. The margin of profit on any of these restaurants and bars is so small on the beverage and the, and the food that they have. I ran one of these businesses. I know what the margin is. And these gaming machines are the things that are keeping these people alive. You see, and we all go to these different establishments, you see the money they invest. They're keeping people employed. I just think it's a bad time, a very bad time in the way the state is, to start raising fees on these people. One of the excuses is we're. The excuse that we're using is more people are leaving Illinois because of high taxes, high fees. We just raised the property taxes. We just raised the sanitation fee. We've got to stop raising fees, guys. Why don't we just take some time, stop and see how much revenue we have? I'm going to say it and nobody, and I'm going to get criticized because I always ask about the Hofra House. And the Hofra House missed their last deadline again. Now, the estimates that we have for retail sales tax on that development out there with the convenience store from 2016 and 2017, convenience store should have been open and the Hofra House should have been open by now. And with the property taxes that they pay and the retail sales tax that our economic development department came up with, it's over $600,000 in taxes, tax revenue for the city. You know, but nobody ever says anything about that and now we're talking April. Maybe. You know, why don't we, we've raised these fees and we're going to get a whole $180,000? Why don't we just step back and maybe find a way that we can cut $180,000 somewhere? Instead of putting it on the back of the small business. And these guys are the small business, the Belleville residents that we are putting it on again. Nobody says anything about the out of town developer coming in here and for four years now, we've been nothing. Still nothing. We've got $2.5 million invested in that project. And they're not open yet. So tonight, you can do all these fees you want together. My vote's going to be no tonight, folks. So let's just do vote on these. If you want to vote on them, do, but I'll tell you what, you're going to be putting a lot of people out of business.
Barry?
I would like to see if the liquor fees don't bother me. But the gaming ones, since Belleville revenue is below the state average according to the report, I was wondering if we could maybe table that and have a discussion before we vote on the gaming fee increase. And I was even, I wanted to piggyback off of what Alderman Consilla said. Compromise is about two groups meeting together. We haven't met with these business owners, at least I haven't, and I wish until tonight, I didn't get an email till 6:30 tonight from someone. I wish I would have heard something before now. Because I, I, I would have been much more, I would have been receptive to hear what you had to say. There's so much good information in front of me. I feel more educated about, and I'm on the finance committee, but this has educated me. I wish I would have had that in my hands at the time. So I want to say compromise takes two teams and we kind of made a decision as a council. We didn't have both sides of teams here.
Okay, okay, very good. Anybody else wants to make comment? Because, yes, sir, Scott?
I just wanted to say, you know, it's these people out here that actually got gaming developed. You know, they're the ones that went out and got the votes and we benefited from that $900,000. You know, and like, like someone else said, you know, they operate on a thin line at times. I don't see any of these guys with many orchards. The state of Illinois has proven time and time again, raising taxes and fees is not going to help in one bit. So, you know, I think that it's up to our, as city leaders, you know, our job is to really encourage more business and more people to buy houses in Belleville. And that's how we get out of this problem, not by raising the fees and the taxes on the people that we currently have. So I think that that's the avenue that we need to go is to encourage more businesses, more people to buy houses, you know, people to keep their neighborhoods looking nice. I drive around every street in Ward 3 every Sunday. If I see a couch in a yard, a car on jacks, I have housing down there that's cleaned up. You know, and it's really helped our neighborhoods and I think, you know, I wish everybody did that and it just encourages people to want to live here. So I really think that raising the fees is definitely not the answer.
Alderman Wiggington.
This is a tough call. I mean, I've been in business for 41 and a half years and I can tell you about shrinking margins. And as I look around this council and I'm looking at the faces of everybody here, this might be one of the tougher votes that we've had to take. I'm seeing an underlying concern, and so have you just spoken up about how you feel. I'm seeing, and I can see on your faces that this is not going to be an easy vote for anybody. I'm seeing an underlying concern about, about these fees. And I'm probably talking video gaming and the liquor license. The other fees, I don't think we have to worry about, but be that is made. Margins are shrinking, cost of doing business is getting tougher. Small business is the backbone of this, of this city. However, the other factor, it's the cost of doing business also. Nobody had to take video gaming machines. Everybody looked at it as a panacea of how to generate more revenue. So it's a two-edged sword here. You know, the people with the video gaming machines are making money. If they weren't, they wouldn't have them in there. And so, you know, the people that stepped to the plate, one of them originally, I think that a lot of them thought, and a lot of people brought this up, that this was going to be a savior for their business because a lot of these businesses are just getting really, really beat up. So do we compromise? Alderman Schaefer had a very, very good point. Alderman Steele brought up a very, very good point. And I'm just throwing this out to the council. I think you've got to look at your hearts and decide, do we go back to the table? Do we reevaluate this? Do we try to bring some of these bar owners in, talk to them? I mean, I know where they're coming from up with this, man. So I already have a pretty good feeling. To be proved, do we take a second look at this? You know, it's not an evil thing if we don't pass it tonight. Not an evil thing one way or the other. It's, are we smart? Are we smart as a council? Are we, are we smart as a city to listen to our voting constituents and our, and our, and our business people to say, you know what? Let's sit out. And if we can't. And if we can't, and I'm gonna say that we should not, you know, increase fees. I, I think it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen after vote.
Well, I think we need to do some educating.
Yes.
And I think, so what I would ask, as a consideration, that we would table one through five. We gotta move on this stuff relatively quickly because time is of essence to get our budget. I would ask that we consider the remainder, uh, item number, uh, eleven C six down through eleven C ten, and act on those tonight if there's no objection. And I will be glad to hold, host a meeting. But I think, ladies and gentlemen, and, and believe me, I hear you. But being the, the chief executive officer to help put this budget together, we haven't raised in a, it's at least ten years. It might, you might be right, it might be thirteen, but I know it's at least ten. And we did work with you for gaming. I think you all know that I stood with you, I wanted it to go to a referendum, but I felt very confident we could get it passed. But we said then, there was Alderman who wanted to make the stickers more than a hundred dollars. I said, let's give it a chance, and let's see how it goes, and get their feet on the ground. That was five years ago. Now, every year that we have a budget, our policemen and firemen and other city employees probably get an average of two percent increase every year. Everybody wants the police to be there when we need them. Everybody wants that fire truck to come fast if they got smoke. And the police and fire, Jamie, am I correct, are sixty percent of our budget. Sixty percent of our budget is police and fire. Now, on a twenty-eight million dollar general fund budget that's proposed right now, these fee increases, and we did not look at considering every fee in the book. We listened to some of the Aldermen and some of the staff members, and suggested that these fees that are here tonight hadn't been raised in many years. So that's why we looked at these. Um, yes, sir?
You can be so kind. Um, and, and folks, fees are gonna have to go up. I just gave a speech in front of a large group of people a couple of weeks ago, and talked about brick and mortar stores, and how people are shopping online, you don't be, when you shop online, you don't pay sales tax. And if you don't pay sales tax, the city residents, they, they've got sales tax revenue. You want your streets fixed, you want, want your power protection, you have to start going back, shopping in the small stores. The easiest thing in the world is to sit in front of your computer at three o'clock in the morning in pajamas and order something online, and have it shipped to your front door, and you don't pay sales tax. Let me tell you, this, this is a bare bones budget. When you talk about cutting, there is nowhere to cut on this budget. The mayor has not replaced employees, he is very prudent. And, and let me tell you, I'm not trying to boost the mayor to be an eagle, but I know this is running a business. This is running a big business. We're the largest city south of Illinois.
South of Springfield.
And this is a big business, and if, if you want your standard of delivery maintained, you want your streets fixed, you want your, um, you want police and fire, you want all the amenities, I don't want to pay taxes, any more taxes, nobody on this council, but you gotta pay taxes if you want what you want. Somewhere along the line, fees are gonna have to come up. Now, every time that we vote on this, you know, you're all gonna come back again and say, poor, poor pitiful me. I'm telling you, guys, I've been beat up before, and it's already one and a half years. I still work six days a week, twelve hours a day, so don't tell me about running a business. There is nobody in this room that's smarter than running a business than I do. That is not easy. So, you know, uh, somewhere along the line, it's gonna have to happen. And I think the mayor is very prudent.
Just, just one or two other things.
It's not a compromise, but I'm gonna tell you what, guys, it's gonna happen somewhere along the line.
Is this a motion?
No, it's not.
Okay, comment, go ahead.
It's a comment. Uh, you had mentioned tabling one through five. First off, I would, number four, changing the liquor license for a special event, that's twenty dollars, not a big deal.
Well, I'm just keeping it simple by keeping all the liquor and gaming in one. That's one ardentness I'm just proposing, we keep it all at one time.
Let's go one step further. The motion to approve the liquor license, but A, B, C, D by a hundred and fifty dollars annually, we are talking about a hundred and fifty dollar annual increase, just a hundred and fifty essentially on each bar. It's that, it's increased, it's not a hundred and fifty each license, is it?
No, it's either they have an A, B, or C. They, they don't-
It's either one or the other.
They have one license of the, they have an A or B, whether they're a restaurant slash bar, and they have R. There's a couple of other scenarios where they might choose to sell alcohol to go, there might be a few exceptions. And then the other thing is a class C, which is a grocery store or convenience store.
And I, I agree with Jamie, though. So general discussion.
Well, and I, I'm, I'm willing to do that for the sake of, I still think there's some educating that needs to be done. There was a couple of comments, just so you understand. Caseyville and St. Clair County are not home rule, so they can only charge by state law twenty-five dollars a gaming license. Anybody who's not home rule-
Correct, Eric?
Yeah, home rule.
They, they have, so when you see gaming fees higher, it's because all of us are home rule cities, and we have the ability to increase those fees. So, believe me, if St. Clair County or Caseyville wasn't in the situation they're in, and some of the other cities that are in that same thing, Edwardsville chose not to even allow gaming, I think you know that. Collinsville, I don't have their rate here, but it's much, I suggest, if, I didn't read, you have time to read this now. I don't know, do you have all the fees from the other area bars?
Bring him and David.
Well, I think that should be included too. Because we're not, what we're proposing, you know, ladies and gentlemen, I, I just want to say one or two more things, and we'll get to a vote here and move on. Jamie, one comment I need from you. This budget, what did you tell me, what did you tell me, uh, you told me a thing today when we were in my office about the budget. It's really only gone up, what, one percent? Well, go ahead and address that real quick so they can hear you. Jamie Matritz, our finance director. Jamie's both a CPA and has her MBA, and she's worked night and day on this budget, as she does every year at this time of year. Uh, and, and we're trying to pay. One, one of the things I think you need to know, and I'm not asking you to feel sorry for us, but it's, you are. Last year, our street light bill with no notice went up almost sixty thousand dollars? No notice, from Ameren, sixty thousand dollar increase. Now, what were we gonna do as the council? Turn off half of them? No, we can't do that for safety. So I'm just saying, we, we as the city are experiencing these same outstanding, and when I say people are leaving, I'm talking about the whole state. The thing printed in the IML was that there was thirty-four thousand people in the last year or so left Illinois and businesses. So the city of Bellev, the last two years now, our income tax, which we always get consistently, has been down a half a million each year. So believe me, we know what you're talking about, just in bigger numbers. And we don't want to lay anybody off. Now, people who've retired, we've not replaced them all right now. We're working charter and charter. But Jamie, a couple of other facts that I'm missing, which you can think of.
So the general fund operating budget is currently about twenty-eight million dollars. Um, the proposal for next year is twenty-eight point one, it's less than a one percent increase, um, which also factors in that all of our union contracts have a three percent raise guaranteed for this coming year. So, um, for the people who say we are not trimming or we're not cutting, that is actually a false statement.
And keep, keep in mind, yes, we do have some, a lot of three percent raises due this year, and that's a good raise. But keep in mind, two thousand nine and ten, or was it ten and eleven, most of our unions took a freeze for two years in a row, a zero.
Right.
So they were, they did work with us. And we did sit down and have some heart-to-heart talks about, about everybody pitching in. We're, we're not doing this willy-nilly. And we work with people, and, and I think Alderman Wiggington said it best, we, we can sit and, we can table this for a few more days. But I will tell you, it's impossible, and I hope you understand, we can't go on ten, fifteen years and raise nothing. That, that's, that's just not possible. Our utility bills at home as homeowners, and I'm a small business owner, utility bills go up, insurance goes up, it's the same for the city. We had a meeting tonight before this meeting about insurance. It makes my head spin. So we do understand, we're, and, and, and you know I've met with the bar owners almost every year, and you know my door is always open to you. And most of you have known, and maybe I didn't personally get through to each and every one of you, but many of you I talked to, or many of maybe who aren't here tonight I talked to, about the proposed fee increases. This comes along the same time every year, but we haven't raised any of your fees in ten years. Ten years. Yes, sir?
One of the things that bothers me a little bit is, I have a number ten, and that's the business license changes. I don't have a problem with increasing it to fifty dollars. But let's make sure that every business has to take out a license to operate here in the city.
Raffi, we talked about this, we're gonna have to look, it needs to be reviewed. I told somebody about that the other day. That, that is one thing that I don't disagree, needs to be, but we, we, yeah, I think there's, we probably need to reevaluate that one. There's a lot of businesses that, that because they never did, they didn't, restaurants and certain ones have to have a business license, bars, et cetera. But every business doesn't, and maybe that's something we need to look at. I don't disagree with that. I'm not disagreeing that you're not constantly trying to structure and look at things. But, you know, the one gentleman talked about you could go outside the county. But keep in mind, we have a paid fire department, and, and, and even right now, even though we're down with retirements and different things, we're still at close to eighty officers. And, and you don't have that in the county. We have, we have a good response from our professional services, they do an excellent job, and, and to keep them at, at some kind of levels of that kind, it takes a lot of money. It's, it's just not cheap to, you know, what it costs for an officer today and what it costs to equip a police car today has changed drastically in my years on this console, console. So is there someone willing to make a motion to table one on this item, eleven C one through eleven C five? Alderman Consola?
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay, so, so you agree to withdraw, so if they agree to withdraw the motion, you still need a motion to table. We need a motion to table.
Make the table.
To table the first, one, one, eleven C one through five. Do I hear a second? Alderman Pousa. So now, the first motion on the floor is to table, and so everybody understands, page two of the agenda, eleven C one through eleven C five. Understanding that for sure in two weeks, we have to bring this to a vote. All in favor of tabling the motion as just stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Who said no? One, okay. Okay. At this time, I'd like to move on, Alderman Consola, to Alderman, to item number eleven C six. At this time, I'd like to move on, Alderman Consilla, to Alderman, to item number eleven C six.
Mayor, come here, let's go in and make a comment.
Yeah, okay.
We have to make a comment with the motion.
Sure, I'm sorry.
And I've got a lot of friends in this office, and I want everyone to know that I support you in raising the fees. And I wanted to call, go ahead and call for a vote today, and make everyone go on record with this vote, and not leave, and tabling it whenever a couple weeks, or whenever we have two to have to vote.
Well, if, I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm okay with a short tabling period to, to try to educate both the Aldermen and, and our owners. We can do that. But understand, if we do compromise some of them, we gotta, we gotta cut something else. And I just wanna make it clear, some of you have made comments, and I wanna make it clear, you know, one example right off the bat, and maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to. It was in the news Democrat the other day. Maybe you've compared some things, but we're not, we're not extremely, um, we don't spend a lot of money here. We're very frugal. Recently, they had the stories online, the city manager of a neighboring city with nineteen thousand less people than us, last year made a hundred and sixty-four thousand. We don't have a city manager, the mayor's the chief executive officer. Last year, you can look it up online, my salary, I believe, was eighty-seven thousand. We're frugal. Now, I'm just telling you, their police chief makes twenty thousand dollars more than ours, and has a heck of a lot less officers. So, we're not wasting taxpayers' dollar. People are getting a good bang for their buck. I assure you, and, and I will be glad to host this meeting and, and educate all of us. But it is what it is, we gotta, we gotta be able to balance the budget and pay the bills and not bounce the checks. Mary?
Yeah, do we need to make a motion, uh, to meet with the business owners?
No, I'm, I'm gonna give my word, we're gonna have a meeting, and we're gonna try to get some-
Because we only have two weeks.
I know, but we're gonna have to do it. I'm gonna look at my schedule, and we're gonna get a meeting set here, and, you know, we'll do it at a, some of you probably would rather prefer an afternoon, maybe, uh, when you're not in mill, your lunch hours are your evening business, maybe we do it, and get together and have a meeting. And for those who can come, come. We'll see, we'll talk about it, we'll start on that tomorrow. Do I, Alderman Consilla, do I hear a motion? And does anybody object to putting the rest of them together? Alderman Consilla, you wanna come up with a motion here, or do we already, I didn't have a take on you, did I?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to read each of them. I'm gonna move that we approved six through ten, but I should read them.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, eleven C six, motion to approve sanitation, additional new toter fee, change from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars per toter. Uh, eleven C seven, motion to approve sanitation, large item pickup fee, change from forty-five, seventy, and a hundred dollars, depending on size of truckload, to sixty-five, ninety, and a hundred and twenty dollars. Eleven C eight, motion to approve housing occupancy permits, change from fifty to fifty-five dollars per permit. Eleven C nine, motion to approve housing inspections, change from sixty to sixty-five dollars per inspection. Eleven C ten, motion to approve business license changes, increase from twenty-five to fifty dollars per license annually. And I so.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear, second by Alderman Pousa. Discussion on these items, Alderman Hazel.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend eleven C six to sixty-five dollars per toter.
It cost us, it's costing us that or more, I think, per so, toter. It's actually costing us probably close to seventy dollars, seventy something, seventy something per toter, we found out, Joe.
Yeah, I-
We're going in a hole, we're-
...saving to the city. I have to use toters.
I'm just saying, we're, we, we raised this fee because we discovered in recent years, since we started the one-man trucks, that were, that they keep going up. So, as we get new ones, we're actually losing money. So, I think it should at least, we're not trying to make money and balance the budgets on toters, but we gotta at least get our money out of them. That's why they were recommended to go to seventy-five. Alderman Tyler?
This is only if, for instance, you would need an extra toter.
If you want an extra one, or if yours breaks so badly that we can't repair it. We try, our guys try to come out and put on a wheel or a new lid, but if yours gets boogered up, if, if grandma backs over it with her car, and it's totally crushed, and you gotta get a new one, it should not be up to the city residents to give you a brand-new one.
Now, if somebody would pay, pay for an extra one and have two, we don't charge them extra.
No, they have to, if they pay for an extra, we don't charge extra trash. And that's an option, you can get two of them. But it's, but we're proposing that it goes from fifty, because fifty is what it was when we started this. And, and what year we start the one-man, Jenny, you were still here, two thousand seven?
Probably.
So, we started the toters then in two thousand seven. Here we are, eleven years later, they've gone up now, our cost is closer to seventy dollars, you'd say? So, huh? At least. So, that we, we might be a little bit low at seventy-five, but we believe it's a fair, much, much better for us. We're not at least losing as much, or we're close. Everybody understand that? Yes, sir?
Point of honor, point of order, your honor. Mr. Alderman Hazel made a motion, we have to see if there's-
Is there a second? Is there a second to Alderman Hazel's motion? If there's no second, then we'll go back to the original motion on the floor. I, okay, yes, sir?
Eleven C seven, since the lowest fee is usually, although people do put together larger amounts, but in most cases, or in a lot of cases, I believe, that is lower amount, if somebody is trying to get rid of a single large item, and I would like to make a motion that the sixty-five dollars remain at forty-five, and the increases still remain the same for the larger amount.
Okay, let me, is there a second? Is there a second on this change? Is there a second? Hearing no second, we're back to the original motion. But let me, let me just say this, Joe. Where, where this really comes in, we know that if you happen to be one of the few people that still has a two-man route, okay, there's a few places, there's a few places that we can't get the one-man trucks in there to, to, to turn around or apparatus, so we still have to have two men on the truck, okay? It's true, those people can put out more trash, and, and we're gonna take it. So, if it's one item, it's not to say that we don't work with people. But when people put out and empty their garage, we gotta charge something, because our landfill fees have gone up drastically. So, believe me, once again, there is some discretion, we try to work with people, but we can't say a blanket statement like that, because you'll have people bringing in trash from other cities to send, bring it to Belleville, and send it out to their friend's house. So, I, I think, I want you to know, we have, every staff meeting, we try to work, John? Per truckload.
Per item.
It's not per item, it's, it's a truck. So, they can, they can put out, and, and honestly, folks, we encourage people to get rid of stuff, 'cause that makes it safer for the fire department and the housing inspections. We want them to, to, to get rid of the excess junk and, and thin things out. It just makes it safer and better for the whole neighborhood. Anything else? So, we have a motion and a second to approve eleven C six through eleven C ten. If there's no further questions, and if we've adequately answered the questions, I call for a roll call vote.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
No.
Randall?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, yeah.
Motion carries, so we've approved those increases, and we will notify you. Uh, give me a chance to look at my calendar, and we'll try to have a meeting here shortly. Zoning Board of Appeals?
Nope, no, hold on, sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm patient.
Okay, great. Separate?
Go ahead, you're gonna read them, yeah?
Yeah.
Can we read them together?
Yes.
Okay, we're making progress.
All right. Eleven D one, motion to approve twelve February eighteen, ten-three-eighteen LLC, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at two-twenty-three East Main Street, the Wine Tap, parcel zero-eight-two-two-zero-three-three-four-zero-three-four, and zero-eight-two-two-zero-three-three-four-zero-three-three, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight, Ward two. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval with the following stipulation, in the name of the applicant only. Eleven D two, motion to approve thirteen February eighteen, ten-three-eighteen LLC, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining at two-twenty-three East Main Street, the Wine Tap, parcel zero-eight-two-two-zero-three-three-four-zero-three-four, and zero-eight-two-two-zero-three-three-four-zero-three-three, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight and one-six-two-point-four-zero-zero, Ward two. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval with the recommendation that the owners work with staff to develop a mutually agreeable solution to the chair encroachment issue.
And that will be settled out. Go ahead, we got two more.
Eleven D three, motion to approve fourteen February eighteen, FKG Oil Company, a request for a special use permit for a convenience store at twenty-two-thirty-five West State Route one-sixty-one, parcel zero-eight-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-seven-zero-zero-eight, and zero-eight-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-seven-zero-one-nine, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight, Ward three. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven D four, motion to approve fifteen February eighteen, FKG Oil Company, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at twenty-two-thirty-five West State Route one-sixty-one, parcel zero-eight-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-seven-zero-zero-eight, and eight, zero-eight-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-seven-zero-one-nine, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-two-four-eight, Ward three. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval with the following stipulation, in the name of the applicant only.
This time, I ask for a motion to approve these four items. Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Dittelman. That's eleven D one, eleven D two, eleven D three, and eleven D four. And with that motion also includes having the proper ordinances drawn. All in favor of that motion for those four items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Okay, we can, I'll still listen to your question.
My question was, there were two people that basically on LD three that were against it. They were basically property, you know why? I, I didn't see them.
They were, I believe, from Swansea, is that true, Anissa?
They were at Swansea, and they had several questions, um, that were answered during the meeting, as well as after the meeting by the applicant. One of the gentlemen, who was the main, um, person who had concerns, has come by our office, and I gave him the information. The concerns were, um, that the natural buffering between the subject site and their houses to the northwest would be affected, but once they found out that that vegetation would stay in place, most of their concerns were addressed. The applicant also, um, they were also concerned about possible trash going, but the applicant was able to provide them with their schedule of how they maintain their properties on a shift basis.
So, this motion, uh, before, I'm sorry, I missed your hand, the motion did pass. Um, and, and for those, you know, that's, that's the site that we're talking about, is that Fullerton and one-sixty-one, which is in the city limits of Belleville.
Mayor, it says on eleven D two, uh, and rather zoning board's approval, staff to develop a mutually agreeable solution to the chair encroachment issue. This is the one in front of Wine Tap, correct?
This is what we talked about, I agreed to get with them.
Oh, that's the mutual?
Yeah, that's the mutual agreement, we're gonna work that out.
Okay.
It, it's in the ordinance as well.
Yeah, so we'll work it out, we'll sit down, and we'll get it figured out. There's some things that they're gonna have to do at the Wine Tap, and I think we can come to some mutual agreement that will work this out fairly. Okay? Uh, we move on now to communications.
Together or separate?
Together.
Together?
Okay.
All right, yeah. Twelve A, Memorial Hospital employee five K, Saturday, September eighth, twenty eighteen. Communication from Memorial Hospital requesting permission to hold their annual five K run-and-walk on September eighth, twenty eighteen, eight AM to nine-thirty AM, starting and ending at Memorial Hospital. City Service requests a one police officer for the intersection on Royal Heights Road and Mary Knoll. Twelve B, Get Up and Go Biathlon, Sunday, April twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. Communication from Get Up and Go requesting to hold their biathlon on April twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, seven AM to eleven AM, no city services requested. Twelve C, Oktoberfest, Friday, September twenty-first, twenty eighteen, and Saturday, September twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Communication from the Belleville Oktoberfest Committee requesting approval to hold the event on September twenty-first and twenty-second, twenty eighteen, from eleven AM to eleven PM, with the following street closure request. Thursday, September twentieth, twenty eighteen, twelve PM, the first block of West Main Street and first block of North First Street. Five PM, closed West Main Street down to east side of Second Street. First block, north, south, and east of the fountain, and East Main Street from the east side of High Street to the west side of Jackson Street. High Street remains open, streets to reopen by three AM on Sunday, September twenty-third, twenty eighteen. Car show street closure, Saturday, September twenty-second, twenty eighteen, six AM to six PM, East Main Street from Jackson Street to the west side of Charles Street, including the first block, north and south of Jackson and Church Street. No vehicles from the car show to be parked on South Jackson. Charles Street open for traffic. City Services requested barricades, police personnel, no parking signs, cleanup of streets, electric picnic tables, and other items as requested. Twelve D, Mi Casa Mexican Restaurant, Cinco de Mayo, Friday, May fifth, twenty eighteen. Communication from Mi Casa Mexican Restaurant requesting to hold a special event at forty-three-eleven West Main to celebrate Cinco de Mayo on May fifth, twenty eighteen. They are requesting to hold an outdoor celebration on their parking lot from eleven AM to eleven PM. There will be live music from five PM to eleven PM, no city services requested.
I'd ask for a motion to approve communications, twelve A, twelve B, twelve C, and twelve D. Motion by Wiggington, second by Schaefer. Any discussion or questions about the communications just read? All in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolutions thirty-three-twenty-five, thirty-three-twenty-six, and thirty-three-twenty-seven. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Anthony.
As a group.
And a second by Alderman Schaefer, as a group. Alderman Schaefer, that's okay, as a group. Anybody have any objection? All in favor of, uh, reading those resolutions by title only, and as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution, fourteen A, resolution thirty-three-twenty-five, a resolution of support for the city of Belleville program year twenty eighteen, application for community development block grant funding. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-three-twenty-six, a resolution, resolution approving the Get Up and Go Biathlon. Fourteen C, resolution thirty-three-twenty-seven, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route one-fifty-nine for the Oktoberfest, September twentieth through the twenty-third, twenty eighteen.
I hear a motion to approve those resolutions. Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Ga. Any additions or corrections? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Motion carries. We now go to ordinances, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance eighty-one-seventy-six. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, we're gonna have to redo, we're gonna have to hold off that.
Yeah.
So, okay, that was, that was all written as one, so, I'd ask for a motion to table, ordinance eighty-one-seventy-six. Motion by Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Consilla, all in favor of tabling that ordinance tonight till the next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I now ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinances number eighty-one-seventy-seven, eighty-one-seventy-eight, eighty-one-seventy-nine, and eighty-one-eighty. Motion by Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Steele. Any discussions on reading those by title only and as a group? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-one-seventy-seven, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance twelve February eighteen, ten-three-eighteen LLC. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty-one-seventy-eight, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance thirteen February eighteen, ten-three-eighteen LLC. Fifteen D, ordinance eighty-one-seventy-nine, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance fourteen February eighteenth, FKG Oil Company. Fifteen E, ordinance eighty-one-eighty, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance fifteen February eighteen, FKG Oil Company.
I hear a motion to approve these ordinances. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Dittelman, to approve ordinances eighty-one-seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.